All right, thank you for being here. Today is February first, twenty twenty-three. We thank you for being here at the West Carroll School Restoration Business Meeting. Mr. Song, please follow up.
Mr. Cox, here. Ms. Harvey?
Here.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Here.
Mrs. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Mundy?
Here.
You would please stand and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's do some introductions. We'll start with the table to my left. These are our board administrators, little props I don't have to start with. We have Jack Hay, our business manager, at the very end of the table. Thanks for being here. We have Julie Jones, our curriculum director. We have Melissa Tice, our assistant superintendent. Devin Barry, Mr. Barry, I forgot your last name last meeting, so I just said Devin. At least I thought of that. Devin Barry, he was our human resources director. We appreciate all four of you being here. As I keep going around the room, we have Nate Monday, I won't forget your name, on our Board of Education for year number two. Joe Cox, next to him, year five, I think. Dr. Townsend, our superintendent. My name is John Lagana, I'm board president for one month. You can probably tell from this introduction. And Miss Miller, our vice president of the board. Autumn Harvey, who has been on the board for five months. Thanks for being here. And Mr. Sloan, our treasurer, our stewardess. Maddie McKean, she will be here later, hopefully. And so she got a job, and so she may be here a little bit late. So we moved her a little further down in the agenda because of that. All right, so. Go ahead and move to item number five. It is recommended that the agenda for the February one, twenty twenty-three meeting be adopted as presented. And I think we have a little minute.
Well, I didn't do an amendment. Oh, you guys actually all did the amendments today. I didn't do them, I done them. So, um, when it discussed the LFI's.
Yes, I want to do the discussion.
Yeah, under.
I'd like to move with me add to the discussion.
Do we just go to any one?
Item number eight, under presentation.
Yep, we can do that.
Um, item B, LFI and LFOs discussion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Song, you want to call the roll, please?
Mr. Cox? Yes. Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
All right. And do we need to do a second vote to go ahead and approve the agenda? Since we just approved an amendment right there. So we'll go ahead and ask for a motion in a second to approve the agenda for tonight's February first, twenty twenty-three meeting.
I approve.
Thank you. Mr. Sloan, call the roll, please.
Mr. Cox? Yes. Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
All right, item six, comments from the public. They don't have anything submitted at this point. But that takes us to item seven, which is Miss Corbett, this communication update.
Good evening, everyone. Wanted to remind you of all the different ways you can find out what's happening in this school district. We have westcarrolltownschools.com, our website. We have Facebook at West Carrollton City Schools and Twitter at WC City Schools. Also under our website is District News. And these are just some of the things that are out there right now. We have the FAFSA ACT and SAT test assistance. There's assistance, excuse me. There's a link there that you can go to and find out more about that, especially if you have a senior at the high school. You definitely want to look at that. There's also free positive parenting support classes that are happening. And College Credit Plus, the family night, especially if you want to do College Credit Plus next year, you need to come to that mandatory meeting. And someone shared with me Tech Fest. And that's an event coming up at Sinclair. And that's also, again, on our website. It's STEM activities. And it's all free, parking, everything. So take advantage of that. And also, under District News, is the state of the district. That is being mailed out to all of our residents, but you can get a sneak peek by going there. February dates to know, these to me are the most important, Groundhog Day, February second, that's tomorrow. Will he see his shadow? And we love Pirates Day. Of course, we love Pirates every day, but February fourteenth. And then we also have QPT Day, no school on Friday, February seventeenth, and no school on Monday, February twentieth, for President's Day. I'm not going to go through all the names, but I do want to recognize some groups tonight. This is the Business Professionals of America. And they did extremely well during their regional competitions. And they had their award ceremony last week. And it was really nice to hear these kids getting these awards, especially because they're competing with bigger schools that have more teams and more individuals competing. So the first place folks will be moving on to the state competition in March. And that is also on the website under the District News. You can find out more about that. And you can find out more about this story, too, under District News. Last weekend was the ONA Association Solo and Ensemble Event. So I'm not going to go again into all the names, but there were a combined fourteen superior ratings, seventeen excellent ratings, and eleven good ratings. And I know these kids have been working hard for a long time. I see Mason out in the audience tonight. I have to point him out because it embarrasses him. And I saw him in the hallway. And he's practicing. I saw Nathan, I saw him in the foyer one day at the high school. He's practicing different groups. But these kids really did put a lot of effort into it, and they really deserve some recognition. And another big thing that happened last week was our friends from Domtar came to the high school. They donated backpacks and supplies for our kids at the beginning of the year. And so they've been talking to me off and on since then. And they said, hey, we have some money, and what, what, what do you think? On my, two of my favorite projects, robotics and the mural club. I said, hey, you know, these kids could always use support. And we were so excited when they came to present a check. And you can see John and Michael look a little shell shocked. That's why we didn't tell them that was happening. So what was really great about the experience, I took them on a tour of the high school following the presentation. And we went to Mr. Neal's robotics lab. Mr. Neal got to show them what we were doing. And you could tell they were impressed. They were impressed, and they're trying to work together to form a partnership of sorts. They were telling him about the robotics they use at their plant. So they're trying to come up with something where the kids can go see something in action. Perhaps some of their engineers are also interested in coming and volunteering to help with robotics. I know the one guy wants to know when the competitions are, so we'll be in touch with him. Mr. Grossner, Mr. G, that makes it easier. He is very excited because he mentioned, hey, we could do a mural for you. And they were all about that because apparently their offices are a little drenched. So that partnership, we hope, will come to fruition. And again, watch for information that comes directly from your child's school through text, email, and phone. And Dr. Townsend, she sends out her weekly communication on Thursdays. Just another reminder, as always, eyes up, phones down, go slow. Please watch for little people and big people when you're driving through the parking lots of the school district and anywhere in a school zone or neighborhoods where the kids are going back and forth to bus stops. And that is what I had this evening. You're welcome, thank you.
All right, that takes us to item eight, which is, we're going to, two parts to this now that we amended our agenda. But part one is our points of pride, which is about robotics. Miss Haffner, stage is yours.
Good evening, I'm Candace Haffner. I am the principal at West Carrollton High School. And I'm joined with Mr., by Mr. Michael Neal and Mason Adalot and Aiden Davey. And we're just going to discuss. Usually we do this presentation in Jan., first of January. And that's always right before they begin their build for the season. So I'm super excited that we moved this to February this year so that they can be here to kind of discuss what's happening. And it's very exciting. Would be remiss if we didn't mention our sponsors. And these are all of our sponsors that help. Robotics is kind of an expensive gig. But thanks to all these companies and these people, they have been able to, we've been able to do this for the last several years. And we very much, we could not do this without them. So we very much thank them. And I know Ms. Corbett just talked about Domtar. So all of these folks have just been integral in making it happen for our robotics team. So the mission of the robotics is first is spreading the values of FIRST by providing our community with high-impact STEM experiences. The vision is basically about inclusiveness, treating everyone with kindness, fairness, and respect, and including everyone. And then our purpose is to inspire the next generation of STEM leaders. And STEM, as you know, stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math. And in the past, these were always taught by themselves. And we, you know, the whole concept of this is that we integrate them together and that we have a hands-on learning experience for kids that is interdisciplinary, fosters critical thinking, logical analysis, and such. So we are very excited that we are able to do this in our high school. And like I said, we do, these are our fearless leaders. I already talked about Mr. Neal, who will be up here in a minute. That is a picture of our lab. And then his cohorts are Ms. Sarah Reynolds and Emily McGuff. Sarah is our librarian for the district. And Emily is an English teacher in our building. And they are, help, they help Mr. Neal and the robotics team make it all happen. And then also is our student leaders. And they're going to step, step up here in a minute. Aiden Davey is our team captain, as I mentioned before. And Mason is our head of marketing division. If I can turn it over to Mr. Neal and you click this thing.
Perfect.
All right?
Cool. Yeah, thanks for having us again. I'd love to talk to you guys about what we're working on this season. But first, a little recap of last year's competition. We went to the Pittsburgh Regional, and you can see our robot on the screen there and our team. Last year was exciting. You can see our robot kind of climbing onto that bar at the end of the match. That was the first year that we were able to kind of have a successful climb, so that was pretty cool. And that kind of represented like a big jump for our capabilities. Typically, at the end of these matches, you have to do something extra. That's, that's what the teams did last year. And in that middle picture, you can see our robot holding two, like, large tennis balls. And so the robot had to pick up these balls and score them in various places of the field. So that's kind of a recap of last year. On the team, we try to focus on both individual growth, but also team growth at the same time. So some, some things that we work on are advancing CAD skills while we're designing our robot. We do a lot of prototyping, and we try to get everyone involved in kind of bringing all of their ideas to the, to the table before we come up with a actual idea for, for our robot this season. And our season began this year on January seventh. We hosted a local team from the Dayton area. And we worked together. First, it's really cool because they, they really encourage teams to collaborate. You're competing, but you're also very collaborative at the same time. And so together, we learned about this year's challenge and kind of brainstormed some ideas and got to know the other members of, of the other team. So this year's challenge is to pick up two game pieces. And that's kind of a unique thing this year. Usually, there's only one game piece that you have to worry about. But this year, we've got these cubes that are filled with air. So they're, they're kind of like beach balls, but they're more cube-shaped, and cones. And you have to pick these up and score them on various places of the field. And then at the end of the match, you can see that platform that is kind of like a teeter totter. And you get extra points if the robots are balanced. So, yeah, and, and that's the cool thing about FIRST Robotics. Every year, there's a totally different game, whole new set of challenges. And here's our CAD model for what we're building this year. Our robot has these arms that kind of extend out and come back in to retract. And we can pick up these game pieces and, and lift them and score them on various elements of the field. So we're kind of in the middle of building that right now. We're, we were just talking before here. We're anxious to put it all together. We've got all of our components built. We're, we're in the process of putting it together into one robot right now. And here are some pictures from our build season so far. The other cool thing about our robot is you can see in the bottom right, we have a swerve drive, which allows our robot to spin around. And instead of just driving like a, like a car would drive, our robot can go sideways and spin while it's going in a direction at once. So, yeah, a lot of, a lot of like advancements that we've made over the past couple of years. Now, we're working on our board approval paperwork and whatnot, but these are the competitions that we are planning right now. We've got one at the Xavier University Sintas Center in the middle of March. And then in April, a couple of weeks later, one in Pittsburgh. And then the goal is always to, to qualify for the championships, which we have been to as a team. We've been there three times since 2016. So that's kind of like the stretch goal, is to hopefully qualify for the championships. Every team kind of hopes to do that. So before we go to questions, I'd like to just ask two of our student leaders here if there's anything they want to share. I just asked, I told them I'd ask if they have anything that they're proud of, of being on the team about. So kind of, what makes them proud to be on the robotics team? So Aiden, do you want to share a couple of words?
Hi, Aiden. I'm team captain, the second year in a row, which is something I'm proud of. But I think, I think the thing I'm most proud of is like all the things me and my peers have been able to come up with ideas for and work together to really create something that we can compete with and do really well with. And I'm also really proud that I got to meet a lot of adults and like mentors that have been able to show me like how you can apply these skills in your future and all the things we get to learn. And so, yeah, so I'm proud of all that. So now I want to be an engineer, which is really cool because I didn't really know a whole lot about robotics or anything like that before joining the team. So I'm proud that I got to learn all that cool stuff.
And I'll ask the same question to Mason, if he wants to share anything about what he's proud of to be on the robotics team.
Like I said, my name is Mason. I'm on the marketing side of it. So they do all the work, I just have to make them look good. That's my job. My job's just to make sure they look good. But yeah, some things I'm proud of is definitely helping out the team. This is my second year doing this. And everyone on the team last year, it was all of our first year except for one person. And so Ms. McGuff, she said, keep things small, try not to do anything too out there. And we managed to do things that surprised a lot of teams, and it got us in contact with a lot of teams. Last year, we came up with the idea of having a scavenger hunt at the event to help drag people toward, help grab people towards our pit and get them talking about our team. And that was something that nobody else was doing, nobody even thought of it. So that was, that, that ultimately helped a little bit, helped me make a little more confident in myself on my first year. But this year round, I'm definitely proud of what all we've done and what all we're going to do throughout the various years.
Oh, great, thanks.
All right, so that's all we have. Do you guys have any questions? Yep.
Have you always been six oh three, too?
Yeah, in, in FIRST Robotics, your team number is kind of your brand.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so we're sixty thirty-two. And in, in the world of FIRST, you kind of recognize teams based on your numbers, yeah.
Okay, guys, I'm like, I feel like I remember that.
Yep.
It may have changed every year, I don't know. Pretty cool. Wow.
And will be able to livestream the competitions again?
Yep, they livestream the competitions. They're pretty fun to watch. It's nothing like being there in person. It's, it really is quite the atmosphere. But yeah, you can, you can watch them on the livestream for sure.
Even the one in Xavier?
Yep.
Really? That's awesome.
Yeah. All right, thanks for having us.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, guys, for coming. I really appreciate it. It's way more fun when you're all here talking than when I'm just talking about robotics. So really appreciate it. Any questions for me? Okay.
Thank you, thanks.
All right, item B, from section eight, is regarding our LFI's. I'll just drop it down.
I feel like I have a big audience. So it must be getting close to six thirty. So with the new building project, we have to finish our program of requirements, which is why we're here to talk about the LFI's and LFO items. I do have a list of what our wish list is. It's not written in stone. Right now, what we really need to get approved is the pads for building the buildings and the additional square footage. That's what we really need to talk about. But I am going to share the wish list with you. But please know it is just a wish list. We just add and reinsert the other stuff. I'm going to turn it over to you. Do you want to copy this? Or did you just share the LFO stuff?
Okay. Yeah, kind of going down through the list, a lot of these things are not known yet, but we, we have it on our radar, just in case. With the first building that was on, on this site, there were issues with some of the soil. So we, we need to make sure that we account for that when we do the new two-four building. And we've also set aside some, thinking about what those dollars might be for the seven twelve site. We have had some soil borings done, and we should get some results of that in the next couple of weeks. So we'll have a better idea of what that impact is on those two sites. On the two-four site here, we do still have the, the remaining portion of the middle school football grandstands that will need to come down. That demolition is separate from the co-funded project, so we'll need to account for that. We have looked at the, the ground building in the corner of the site that you have a maintenance and storage information in there. We are looking to either potentially demolish that or renovate that. Right now, we're thinking that it's going to be out of the way and that we can keep that. That'll be a cheaper solution if we can keep that and do some minor renovations, clean it up, make it look good. It is on the corner of the site as we come in. We do have the statin garage just across the field there. It's in disrepair, that, that will need to come down. So we've identified that also. When we get to the high school site, we are looking to maintain the four hundred wing, which is the, where the maintenance and bus repair happens. So we're looking to maintain that as a separate building. So there'll be a little bit of work to do that as we demolish portions of the, the high school. But then also, a little bit of improvements to that building so that it can better serve the district. With the new high school, middle school, we are looking that we'll probably displace the baseball field in Diamond. And so we would need to relocate that, potentially in the location of where the current Schnell building is, is, is the kind of the thought on that. With the demolition of the grandstand here for the middle school, there is a lot of storage that is utilized in that building for the district. And so we would look to potentially have, build a small storage building to, for, for that storage that's being displaced, potentially over at the high school site. As part of the demolition, we do want to also maintain the auditorium. That is not a co-fundable space. So we are looking to maintain the auditorium portion of the building and maybe some other spaces around that, again, to serve the district. So we'll need to make sure that we're allowed to make that a standalone building so there's some utilities and other things, closing up the wall where we demolish it, updating restrooms and that kind of thing, so that, that can stand alone. So that'll be out there. That, some of these have, we still need to figure out what the scope is, exactly what that is. And we're going to be having meetings and going over there, really starting next week, and looking at existing drawings and seeing what, what makes the most sense and most cost-effective and, and the best use of the spaces for the district. We do anticipate needing to increase the bus lot bullpen. So that, that's something else that is, is on our radar right now. If things go well with the budget and everything, I think there's a desire to add some restrooms and concessions and locker rooms at the stadium, football stadium. We'll also probably need to relocate some of the field events that are on the south side of the, the field. We would like to bring tennis courts to the high school stadium, have everything, or high school site and have everything there. And then the, the couple of things that are, are key right now are, as we look to submit for the program for the two-four building, we are right now at an overage of area. And we have also discussed of enlarging the gymnasium from six thousand to seven thousand square feet, primarily so that it can be a full-size, high school-sized court, have a little bit of seating. So right now, it's, it's a little bit less than that. You really won't have the clearances to be able to do that. And then there's a potential of maybe some material upgrades, such as terrazzo in some of the areas in the high school. So that's, that's the main list right now. The, the additional square footage for the two-four building is about eight hundred and fifty thousand. It's, it's, it's our best guess at the number. OFCC will end up determining what that is. But it's basically based on the amount of square footage that we're adding to the building times kind of the average square foot cost. And that's all part of the master plan. So they'll finalize that. But it's, it's in that range of about eight hundred and fifty thousand.
And then I also attached a copy of the tentative build schedule.
Okay. Yeah, a lot of the LFI stuff is, is basically happening kind of after the construction of most of the buildings. So because in many cases, they're part of either adding on to the high, doing things to the high school or whatever. And all that will happen after the construction of the two new buildings.
And so our goal is to get the program of requirements turned in as soon as possible, which is why.
Yeah, we have a, a couple of meetings coming up. And after the, our ECO charrette, we will be submitting that program of requirements and officially moving into the schematic design of the face.
I, I asked for us to have this opportunity to see kind of what, just to kind of clarify for folks what we're doing. As all of you know, hopefully, we're in the really early stages of phase two of the construction of buildings that in a few years are going to be standing, the two-floor building with second, third, fourth pavements. That'll be on this property where the middle school is roughly. And then the middle school, high school joint campus at the location where the high school is. And so over the next few years, there's going to be a lot of discussion about this. Tonight kind of kicks that off. And there's a core group of folks who meet weekly still on Thursdays, a couple hours, and hash through a lot of the details, some of which are going to be mentioned now. And so understandably, as you try to design what this is going to look like, there's going to be situations where they need feedback from us. And so that's essentially what you're kind of watching happen here. And so want to be careful because there's not an endless amount of funds, obviously. And so what we choose to do with those and how we use them, we want them to benefit kids the most. We want them to benefit the community the most. And so essentially what we're being asked about tonight with this list, is I believe twelve or thirteen items on it. twelve or thirteen items on it, one question I would have is, of the things we see listed here, do you see any other item on this list that you would put as a priority as well for us to consider, other than the square footage for the gym space in the two-four building?
The prepping the ground, one and two, yeah.
Yeah. When we look at the priority somewhat when these come into play, you know, because we can have our laundry list, the ones that come to the top first are the area for the building. Second will end up being the demolition of the grandstands, because we'll need to do that so that we can build the building here on the two-four site. And then, whatever we need to do for, to develop the building pads and deal with the soil issues, assuming that we have them. We don't know that yet, but at least at this site, because we had it with this building, we're anticipating it'll be very similar for the two-four building because of the proximity. The high school, maybe a little bit less, but we don't know yet, so, but we want to put that out there as a possibility. Those are our top priorities. The other ones that are somewhat, you need to do something, is when we maintain the auditorium and we maintain the four-hundred, we have to do something. There's no getting around it. Some of the other things, you know, are, I think, great things for the district, but it still means you need to have the money to do it, you know? If you don't do the concessions and locker rooms and that at the stadium, you know, you're not, that cannot happen. Same with the tennis courts, sorry, Leslie. But those are things that, you know, you have some options, but the other ones, you know, you're pretty much going to have to do. It's just a matter of what that scope is, and we can kind of control that and control the costs when we do that to decide to what level we do things. But you can't avoid some of them just because of what's going to happen, so, if that makes sense.
Anybody up your head, any specific questions about this list or what he's talking about with regards to the groundwork and the expansion of that building?
I do. On our first part of our project, and maybe Jack can answer this, I thought we were around two sixty-five a square foot on the buildings. So, it's like three sixty now?
Three sixty-five, two or ten.
How does that compare when we're building gym space to building learning space, educational space? Is it the same, is it the same number? It's not the same product?
No, it's not. Well, Mark probably answered that better, but...
Yeah. I'm digging a little bit, so... Well, it's actually, probably more expensive than that. You're getting an average cost of the building, so it's not as if we're going in and having an alternate to give us the cost to make this bigger. Essentially, when you have the additional square footage, you're agreeing with OFCC to pay the cost per square foot that's associated with the whole project. So, the gym is actually probably a more expensive space than the average. I also know it's a storm shelter. It is a storm, it will be a storm shelter for, in this case. So, there's a little bit of a premium associated with that, too. Concrete and more construction. Yeah, yeah. It's, as you've probably seen with the gymnasium here, it's a pretty intensive build just for that storm shelter. The other question, I did not see anything on here or heard anything about when this building comes down. And where is that at?
I don't have...
For which, the middle school and the fine arts building are part of the co-funded... I don't mean when, it's the price.
That's built into the project.
Yeah, yeah, that's a co-funded, that's already part of the project. That's not extra dollars. Okay, because we have other things that are on this list, the abatements and the removals. That was not an itemized, that's going to be included in the OFCC? Yes, yes. That's why I was asking. Yeah, yeah. The middle school and the fine arts building across the street are part of the co-funded demolition and abatement projects. So, yep. That's all I got, thank you.
Might as well pass a little bit over. So, just wondering now, so, if the grandstands at the middle school there, why are they not connected to the building of the middle school to be included in the OFCC?
They're not a part of your educational building.
I see.
Athletics, athletics is not a co-fundable thing, so...
I see.
And the state doesn't necessarily, you're to provide a site, the fact that it happens to be where we want to build that...
Doesn't matter.
Is the district's problem, not the state's problem, as far as the funding goes.
So, when it comes to the auditorium renovations?
Yes.
It says potentially includes new roofs. So, if the new roof does not need to be whatever fixed up or things like that, will that make this price tag much cheaper?
Yeah, that scope is very early. We're not sure exactly what all needs to be done.
Yeah.
So, we're going to evaluate that with the district and look at all the systems and see what needs to be done at a minimum, what we'd like to do, and see how that shakes out with all of the costs.
Because I'm like, if you don't need a new roof, that probably would save a lot of potential money.
Most of the roof over there is at the end of life or beyond. When we did some work at the auditorium for some of the HVAC, a couple of years back, we ended up having to replace a good portion of it, just because as we started doing stuff, it was leaks and beyond the life. The current HVAC system that we have in there, will that still take care of what we're planning on leaving? Does that still take care of that block?
Well, we put in so far, air conditions, the auditorium and the foyer room, that's all we've done so far. So, we're looking at phase two for that, which would pick up the scene shop, the dressing rooms, and the lobby of the high school building. That hadn't been done yet, so we'll see if part of this project, we have to enlarge that and what we have to do to make it...
So, currently, the new system does not cover the band room, the old vanity room?
We've only done something big enough to do, the auditorium itself and the foyers. So, it's just two rooftops, well, the community room also.
And then, this is just because I wonder, what's a terrazzo?
Terrazzo?
It's the high school floors.
I'm like...
So, it's kind of like a concrete product.
I see. Okay, because I'm like, I have no idea what the heck that is. And then, can grants, can we add grants on top of this to help with the payments of these? Is that possible, or is really...
Probably not.
No?
I mean, we could do some fundraising for some of the athletic stuff, but it really comes down to, do we have the people that would be able to support costs like that?
Yeah. I don't know if, you know, the state has any extra different areas other than OFCC. I wanted to be helpful, Mary. Yeah, that's all I got, thanks.
Since we're discussing the adding additional on to the two-three-four building for the gym, might be great for you guys to let us know the size of this particular gym and the gym over at the five-six building, to get a good comparison.
I believe that they're both around seven thousand square feet, which is what we're proposing. And I think, I could be wrong, but I believe that you did also do extra funds for those first two buildings, so this is a similar ask in that manner.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was getting at. We're trying to make them virtually the same as the other buildings we've already built.
The intermediate gym is closer to the seven thousand square foot.
Yeah.
This one's slightly smaller than that in size.
One of the reasons this is even an issue, too, is in the first phase of this project, we can decide these things. And in phase two, the state gets to decide stuff, and if we want to add to it or make it better than we think it's going to be, we have to have discussions like this. Just so you understand, we didn't do this the first time because we didn't have to. This was an all-district decision, and the size of these was determined by some of these same poor folks, but now the state gets to dictate, hate to use that word, but a lot of what we do and what the architect and the construction company and the district staff can decide is what they let us decide, what we're willing to pay for.
And what we want to get in the program of requirements, so...
Anybody else have any questions?
Nope.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
So, does anybody else have any other comments or questions about this before we move on to item nine?
My comment is, I would recommend doing it now when we're building the building and not trying to add on later. Just looking at how much cost went up from when we did phase one to phase two, it would be...
All right. All right, moving on to item nine, Mr. Sloan.
Thank you. I ask the board to approve the minutes of the special meeting and regular meeting held on January eighteen, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
All right, Mr. Sloan, call the row, please.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Monday?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
All right, item ten, Mr. Bear?
Good evening. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the listed personnel items, item ten A through item ten H.
Motion.
Second.
Any comments, Mr. Bear?
No. All right, Mr. Sloan?
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Monday?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
All right, item eleven.
Item eleven, the superintendent recommends that the West Carrollton Board of Education grant an administrative contract to Sierra Froman for the period of time indicated.
Motion, secondly?
Second.
Any comments here?
Yes. She was completing her, what is it called? Her internship right now, and we needed, we are losing a school psych. She's moving to Columbus, and she will replace the school psych that we are leaving. School psychs are very difficult to find, and we have to get them as soon as possible. So, we were able to get one to replace the psych.
So, she's been interning with us?
Yes, we get one a year. I'm sorry, say it again.
For about a year she's been with us?
This school year, yes.
This school year, so?
And she's doing an excellent job, and it gives her also the opportunity to shadow which lies up in the rest of the year, so it's real...
Second.
Second time.
Yeah, I believe second in about five years that we've been able to get from an internship.
All right, Mr. Sloan?
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Monday?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
All right, item twelve.
Mr. Hay?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, the superintendent recommends that the board approve, in conjunction with the OFCC and as presented, the agreement from, the agreement form, K-12 CM at risk project with Shook Construction Company regarding the following CFAT projects. Number one is the new two-four school, number two is the new seven-twelve school, three is the West Carrollton Middle School abatement and demolition, and four is West Carrollton High School abatement and demolition.
Motion, in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments?
No, this is officially signing off on Shook Construction to build phase two for us, the same company that did phase one, and we are excited to have them back on board again.
Mr. Sloan?
Mr. Monday?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
All right, item thirteen?
Yes, the superintendent recommends that the board approve, as presented, amendment two to the owner consultant agreement with Bowser Morder Incorporated for the new PK-one and five-six building project.
Motion, in a second?
To room seven?
Yeah, Bowser Morder's contract with us is on an hourly basis, so, as the more hours they spend here, and having overtime hours and their travel time and stuff, we did an amendment because there was a not-to-exceed amount on the first contract. We went over that, we did an amendment for the second, and this here kind of helps wrap that agreement up for them.
Okay, Mr. Sloan?
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Monday?
Yes.
All right, item fourteen, Dr. Talbot?
I'd like to recommend that the board adopt the resolution confirming that the West Carrollton School District will conduct athletics in accordance with the Constitution, bylaws, regulations, interpretations, and decisions of the Ohio High School Athletic Association as presented. This resolution will remain in effect for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Motion, in a second?
So moved.
Second?
Any other comments? Pretty normal, aren't they? Mr. Sloan?
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
I'm staying.
Mr. Monday?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
All right, we move on to our student rep report.
I don't have much to say, other than I will be meeting with a few presles from different buildings in our district very soon, and also NHS will be hosting a charity event on February twenty-four. We're hosting a volleyball, boys versus the girls volleyball team, so I encourage to come out. It's going to be for a charity. It hasn't been chosen which charity yet, but that's it.
That's a nice question.
Yeah. February twenty-fourth.
All right, very good. The only other thing I'll add to the student rep portion of our meeting is on the eleventh of February, which is the second Saturday of the month, our student roundtable will meet here. Matty will be part of that, and so our other three districts, Valley View and Northmont and Centerville, their student reps will be here with us as well, and we'll be trying to decide what type of topic to spend the spring on, and hopefully invite some legislators and state board reps, anybody that we can attend and listen to the students, whatever it is that they decide to research and talk about. So, we'll share that hopefully in March. All right, so moving on, we have committee reports, it's the next thing on the agenda. Anybody have any committee reports?
Okay, I don't really have much, but with the legislative portion, the state, you know, had their State of the Union, there's a few things in regards to vouchers and, you know, things like that that could, maybe a little bit harder for public schools, but of course, I didn't read too much into it just yet. It's a very, very long document, so I'll look more into that, and then hopefully I can have an update on really how that affects us here in the future. And of course, our community action board is gearing up. It's bound to happen here soon.
Four to five.
Four to five?
No, four, five, yeah.
I was hoping for time, do we have time yet?
Nope.
We'll get a time, round six. So, yeah, in April, we're going to have our, we're going to have our community board meeting again, and it's going to be my first meeting, so I'm very, very excited to see all the communities come together and have a good conversation, so, that's good stuff. That's it for me.
Anybody else? All right, so moving on to comments from the superintendent.
I'd like to congratulate our students who participated in BPA and OMEA. They did a fantastic job. And I'd also like to thank Domtar for their donation for robotics and arts. It was a tremendous donation, and it wasn't what we expected, and we are very grateful. And that's really all I have.
Mr. Sloan?
As Mr. Monday said, Governor Wyand started the conversation about this new state budget that would start to join... that would start July one for the next two years. And the Republicans, there's a lot of emphasis on continuing to put more money into vouchers and charter schools. And, but he did mention that the, under his budget, to continue the fair school funding plan, which is the current formula that we're on this two-year cycle. So, I mean, I think that's a positive, that we can hopefully continue on with that here, you know, for year three and four for the next two years, instead of having to have a conversation about coming up with a brand-new funding plan again. So, this conversation will go on the next five months for the state budget to start July one. Keep an eye on it.
All right, anything else?
Nope.
All right, so I don't see any of you folks here, so we'll move on to central office staff, starting Mr. Berry. You need to pass the mic to you, or you're good?
No, I'm good.
I just want to say, you know, congratulations in the future to, or good luck in the future to our robotics team. I know there's going to be a lot of long hours put in there, but I also want to add that we now have a robotics team at the middle school. We have Project Lead the Way with robotics and eleven classes. And so, this is just going to, you know, help support the team at the high school in the future. So, we're very excited for that whole school team.
Is this the first year for that?
Yes, because we just added Project Lead the Way, a couple courses in one of them, robotics, so thrilled to have that.
I might have a question more than a comment. So, with the discussion topic on the additional square footage for the two four building, is it a yes or a no? Because we're looking to move forward, we got a meeting tomorrow, and no, we need to kind of have some ideas so we don't, because if we delay the project, we start now, then that puts it back two weeks later. If we keep going, pretty soon we're off our track. And I wasn't sure what the board's decision was, or if they're waiting to make a decision on this, or what are we doing?
Well, what we did for the agenda was a discussion item, and so what I wanted everybody to have a chance to do is see what the, at least initially what you're thinking is as far as other projects, other aspects of this that we're going to be asked about later. So, we could have context to this and not just the two four building, additional space for the gym. So, if we're looking at just taking a straw vote here, we can do that. I certainly support that. I think if it's similar to the other two structures we already have. One of the questions we would, I don't know if this is an accurate way to ask this question, but when, when there's any type of LFI funding at this level or decision made at this time with buildings not even close to design, I don't know how close, I don't want to insult you, with buildings not totally designed yet, is there a funding concern? Do we have funds to say, go ahead and do this when we know OFCC funds that we're waiting on from them are not probably anytime soon coming to us?
It's not a funding concern on that as much as it is working on the design and getting the design done. Because as soon as, as soon as we get the POR approved, we're going to start straight into putting pen to paper, or they are putting mouse to, mouse to screen, I guess. But when they get into that, everything that we do that's additional at that time, we change their design, pushes it back, and then there's a cost associated with something like that.
Yeah.
So, just like all those items on the paper that Mark went through on that, those costs and stuff were just, we haven't even looked at those projects. I mean, that was so preliminary, there's really no hard numbers to any of that, and it was just a pie in the sky number of guess. Those weren't ready to be out there, and we're not, we were planning next week to do a walk-through of the buildings to start getting an idea of what the scope actually is. Those numbers can change dramatically between now and when we finally come back and say, hey, here's where we're at, and here's what this might actually cost. I would have said that we weren't ready to share those yet, just because they're so, they're so out there, it's such a wide range. We haven't pulled them down into scope yet to see what we can afford and what actually needs to be done on that one.
Without that preliminary stuff, I would have said no.
Yeah.
I'm just telling you.
What?
Without the preliminary stuff that you just presented, I would have said no on the eight hundred thousand. Because it doesn't make sense to me to spend that kind of money when we don't know what we're looking at with the wish list, or not looking at the renovations we're going to do to like the four hundreds building. We don't know what it looks like yet.
Yeah.
So, I just heard of the four hundreds building yesterday. Yeah, yesterday, for the first time that we were going to try to save that building for a bigger, better, stronger barn, plus barn. But like I said, I would have never said, I would have said no to the expansion of that gym without having those preliminary numbers.
And to clarify that a little bit on that, I know it's shown up as gym space on there, and that's what it looks like. But it showed up as gym space because we've added additional square footage in the enrichment and the intervention part of this school too. We've added extra classroom space, extra office space, and what that's done is that's taken us up to the limit we were allowed to have. Instead of, so we had pulled that gym space back some, we're trying to put that gym space back up. It shows up as gym space, but overall on the project, it was, it's in the gym now because we've added other areas throughout the building when we were going through our POR, deciding that this was important and we had these other areas on that too.
That was explained to me also, but still looking at what we were looking at to keep a maintenance building of some sort for storage, which I know you're losing a ton when we take down the old stadium. I know there's a ton of storage underneath there, but not having some kind of an idea of what this looks like.
Yeah.
I'm just, I was just making a statement that I would have said no without that.
The other thing I think we all know is that this, this list can change. Obviously, things could fall off this list, things that you haven't thought of yet could get added to it. So, we realize that, but knowing that this is a two- or three-year process, or hopefully that's probably a three-year process, we're going to have to have this conversation more often. So, I would, I would just admonish you now that we're probably going to ask for, for these kind of conversations more. I apologize if it was, seemed premature, or that it was maybe not a surprise, because I know you were thinking more like March first to have this conversation, and I appreciate that too. But as far as, as far as the board's concerned, and certainly in my opinion, I'm okay with this. I will kind of just ask the rest of the folks up here what your, what your quick thought is, a yes or no, so they can go forward. Nate?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, you know, especially for the soils and things like that, and of course for the gym space, I'm fine with that. You know, I think it's very important, especially for the safety concern, that to also have that space. I also wanted to add, I'm happy that we have these, even though they're pie in the sky numbers, the community asks these questions as well, you know? So, for us to have a more informed decision on these things is so important, not just for us, but for the community that we represent, so it's a big deal. And I really appreciate you guys, you know, taking the time to, you know, even though they're kind of shone-to-dark type numbers, I mean, it gives us a good direction to look, so when things get tighter and closer, we can have a better decision, better informed decisions, so I appreciate that. But yeah, I, I'm good with those, with those select few for now.
Joe? I own a construction company, so I know that there's things that happen, I get it. But again, I don't go to my customers and say, boy, it could cost you this, and it might cost you this. Oh, by the way, if you're looking at doing this, that's why I like to see things upfront before I would say a yes or a no. I agree with what Nate was saying, the gym space and the safety space is important, but in the end, we're still spending taxpayer's money on this part, so I'm a little cautious when we start talking about that. We've already asked them for so much, and they graciously gave us that money upfront to build the first stage and whatever bits and pieces we have for the second, so it's a yes.
All right, it's a yes for me, Leslie?
Yeah, of course, it's a yes for me, because I've been intrinsically involved in all of this. So, we need to keep the project moving and things will, it wouldn't flow off this list, but it's, money was back on the kids.
Yes, I am in agreement with everyone else on the board.
There you go. All right, we're at board comments at this point, I'll start with Nate.
Oh, boy. The keeper gave up the mic, just so everyone can hear me. I'm sure you can hear me before the mic. So, I don't really have much. Of course, I want to congratulate, what is it, the orchestra, the solo ensemble, the BPA, all these amazing people doing all these amazing things in like a two or three-week span is amazing. So many superior ratings, isn't that a good sight to see? I, I think we had more superior ratings than we did whatever the level three rating is, I don't know if that was it. Yeah, good, decent, I don't know, but I'm happy about all those superior ratings. That's a really good feeling to, to see how, how amazing our students can do. Other than that, you know, I love seeing our local businesses working with the schools. You know, places like Domtar, and I mean, I saw with those sponsorships on that screen a little bit ago, a lot of those businesses are local, you know? So, I'm happy that the businesses are really connected with our community. That's a big deal, because, I mean, it'll pay off in the end, hopefully for both parties, and especially for us, that's amazing. So, and of course, I'll make it quick, because there's a lot of people here, and I'm sure you guys probably want to go home at some point. So, my quote is by Maya Angelo, which is, nothing will work unless you do. So, easy enough. Thank you, guys.
I just want to congratulate our students. Competitions are tough, I've been to all of those before with my two sons. It's not an easy process, and it's not something for the lighthearted to stand up there and do those things, so congratulations to that. The other thing I want to clutch on is, I got a phone call this week from a parent asking about some of the building stuff. Everybody needs to understand that the five of us board members also have full-time jobs. So, when you call us in the middle of the day, it doesn't mean we can answer you instantly. It doesn't happen. I own a construction company, Nate's with the board of elections, John's with accounting, Leslie has her own business, so please, a little bit of patience would be greatly appreciated. This parent was not real happy that I didn't call them back instantly when they had questions, but I work too. This is, this is a labor of love in the evenings, and I put in seventy hours a week and sometimes seven days a week just to keep my company rolling, make my customers happy too, so just ask for a little bit of patience. That's all I've got tonight, thank you.
Okay, I first of all want to congratulate all the kids, the BPA, the solo and ensemble orchestra, the band and choir. They put in a lot of hours and it's, it's great. I did solo and ensemble when I was at high school, and I know exactly what they were doing. I also want to, last Friday was the Hall of Fame induction and the pirate crew, which I was inducted in the pirate crew. And I wanted to thank Kathy Van Dyke, because she put in so much effort into all of this. And Evan for nominating me. What I didn't know was behind the scenes, my son was working and had contacted a lot of my old, not old, but prior students that used to play for me, and it was great to see them, a lot of them came. My girls' team came, the entire group came, which was shocking in itself, and part of the boys' team, and both of my sons that live in Indiana made it as well. So, it was a very nice evening, my husband was there as well, so it was very much appreciated by myself. In fact, one of the girls sent me flowers this week from the twenty thirteen team, so, because she couldn't be there, she was ill. But I do appreciate it very much, and it was a very nice evening and well organized and went off. So, and to congratulate the other two that were actually in the Hall of Fame. So, the, I'll finish up with, I just had a meeting with my boys' team today, and we have enough to go forward and probably adding some more, so hopefully we can do that. So, if you're looking to do a spring sport, please get on final forums, get those physicals in, and reach out to your coaches. I know there's several of them on multiple forums that did not make the meeting, so I will be reaching out to them and see if their intent is to be on the team.
I just wanted to take a moment to thank Domtar for their generous donation to our students. It's always appreciated when our community gives back.
All right, just so you know, you stole most of what I was going to do, because we were going to have our straw vote now when I got to my comments, and we all had this in front of us. Hey, I don't have to talk about that, so certainly I was at Vendelia, which is the school that hosted the OMEAs and my son and Mason's still here? He's up, okay. He's a percussionist as well, and so the kids were, it was a long day, as some of you probably know. Vendelia doesn't usually host the events, usually it's Stevens', but this year it was in Vendelia. Kids did great. Mr. Bukowski and Mr. Coleman had long days, and Mr. Sap as well for that event. And students were just all day long in there. If you like music, that is the place to go on your OMEA. So, congratulations to kids, the BPA kids, certainly the donation, I think that check said sixty-four hundred dollars on it, if I'm not mistaken, that Domtar donated to us. Certainly, that'll go a long way for helping the little club and robotics. So, thanks to everybody for that. We, we don't have executive sessions tonight, but a lot of folks in the room for a work session we're going to have shortly, the topic of which will cover a few things, among those would be safety. We're going to talk about some other topics as well, so if you're interested in staying around for that, you're welcome to do that. But for now, I'll go ahead and ask for a motion in a second to adjourn the business meeting, and then we will resume with a work session, give everybody a chance to, to get up and go if they want to leave, and those who stay can stay with us. Motion is a second to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sloan?
We're not, we're just.
We don't have to.
We'll just give everybody a couple of minutes, if you want to.
We're going to take a break.
Step out, we'll take a five-minute break, and then we'll resume another work session, then we'll adjourn after that.